Any public discussion? Okay, we'll go down to Dusty Bill and we'll get him out of our hair.
I like that girl.
We tease each other all the time anyhow.
Probably start off, take care of Stan again since the John Deere screwed up. There's a letter.
I feel like they screwed it up.
John Deere for National, not John Deere.
Was it in favor of us or them?
Well, it was kind of a wash. They just, they gave the wrong payoff on one integrators. So they gave correct payoff on backhoe instead of a integrator.
On backhoe?
Well, you got backhoe payoff then. I need it.
So this is just a new, new purchase order and stuff where all the numbers on your old payoff was... Oh, I can't see what the payoff line. This is fifty-eight thousand dollars higher than what the, there's a copy of the letter.
No, I'll be alright. I'm just gonna die.
Crazy in payoff.
Yeah, they gave you a payoff of twenty-seven thousand. It's supposed to have been eighty-six thousand.
Twenty-seven sounds fine.
Yeah, but it was a long contract.
What was the number? What was the number for this?
On there. I mean, we didn't pay it off. They just, that is what screwed it up. So anyway, here's the updated purchase order. Just gonna have to sign all this again. So the rest of the others wants to be trash. So I get initials there except the next item.
You're getting paid for our net off the backhoe on the payoff.
Well, we didn't, we didn't even, when we found out it was wrong, we didn't even pay it off. We didn't pay anything off.
You haven't done anything.
We haven't done it.
The paperwork needed to be correct.
Right. Yeah, that's what we're doing. Just correct paperwork. Then on that box right there for the charitable money. Initials, signature and signature please.
Cause he's in Wisconsin, that's the problem. He's in Wisconsin, that's the problem.
Yeah. That's your name or says you pay us like a hundred bucks. Your balloon payment, amount financed without balloon payment. And I talk to you not to make that payment though. So here's the new one. New one twenty-two that all three of you need to sign. And I forgot to get that one to sign now.
You did.
That's the notice to be sent.
That's what it says. Hold on. When I get in here, so I start coughing. Is it air conditioning or something? There are people downstairs.
I still want to move the correct calendar.
All set? That's my turn.
This is the contract for Toby's. Pretty much the same thing. Just add who you are, who we are. That's all integrators and serial numbers, five-year warranty.
How are you?
The initials right there, and initials right there.
And these guys didn't have to forget any tires. I said, I know two of those with the J two of them for Toby. I don't recall that. You do?
Yours weren't on buybacks. What reason why yours?
I know.
I'll sign.
I got four. I got four.
What's the date?
Uh, today's eighteen.
Guess I'll go down here and see.
And the signature in that box. Did you sign that box?
No.
Yeah, you did. That's an amortization schedule to which the payment's gonna be.
Take more sign.
Yeah, I think the size of the situation.
It's all the amortization.
We already had one break down.
Didn't leave the end or something?
Exactly. And everything coming.
Really?
They just left an extra gray or make it as they may. Keep it in.
You can write condition. What's this?
Uh, flood turn that page. Turn over. Right down there.
I need to put it in here too.
No. That's a certificate of acceptance. Signature on that.
Gotta sign it here is all I do, right?
Yeah, just sign it. That's the insurance the other side. Just initial right there.
Have these been put on insurance already or do we need to do this? Not what you say.
Take the other ones off and put the ones on.
They need the motion, you said?
Do what? No, as soon as you get them.
Are we doing it or are you doing it so?
You guys do that.
Okay. Are you doing it?
If you want me to.
Well, I got asked this morning by secretary about these things. Have you guys got yours on insurance? Your secretary do it?
I need to check.
Secretary.
But I need one like that to ask.
Anyway, we're back here.
We are.
Well, they started breaking down.
Like what?
Already did. With a new crack and pedal and everything and one of them already.
That's an engine pedal. They'll stay off. They'll mess with it.
Flex pedal and flex center and I forget what else.
We knew that was gonna break down.
I know.
We just win.
My secretary won't know what to pay out, what to pay for the others or whatever. Okay.
I'll make copies.
Some ass committing.
You're copying. You don't copy for the bar?
I make it for you.
You make one. I'll get you.
Make a motion approved.
Certainly.
Tell flavor.
Thank you guys. Yeah, I appreciate it.
You bet.
See you.
Thanks guys. That boy.
I think he wants you to stay.
No, he didn't want me to stay. He just, he went, he said, you hear him? He said, move best to the top so we can get rid of you.
Right.
Thank you guys.
You're welcome. Dang. Let's go to a resolution for E911 Board, Rappaport County.
I did a resolution both ways. I talked at length with Jesse. He was our new district auditor. And he said at first that according to you guys, county commissioners' duties and responsibilities, you are the board of directors. And then he emailed Cheryl and she sent back that, that it had changed. You guys can determine them. So you guys determine whether you want them as an advisory board or as a board of directors. I'll just attach all of that to this resolution so that they wonder why we did it. And no matter how they do it, you guys, your first meeting, as soon as you set this board up, you guys need to set your officers again and then set your term limits. I mean, the ambulance, they did like two of them as ones, then two, three, four, five. And then your ones, once they roll over, then they become fives and you'll just keep rotating that way. But you guys will have to set your term limits and your officers again once we determine. And then that will go, need to go through the minutes also. So as soon as you have yours on the next agenda, we'll put on the term limits and what the officers want.
How many you got on board?
They wanted seven. Did you guys talk to Rick?
No, but we talked. We think we may just stay with five.
Okay, then I'll have to change this then because I did not know that. So... Who do you want on your five and I'll run? I'll run change my resolution because it says seven on there because I thought that's what you guys were.
What, your existing five-member board?
Yeah. Yeah. Maybe it'd probably easier if five people not, as many people having different ideas is.
To be an advisory board or whatever. I mean, still, you know, we gotta sign the money and all the above and too.
Yeah.
If they're an advisory board, they will not be able to hire and fire.
Okay, you want that responsibility or not?
Yeah.
Hire and fire?
Yeah. I feel like if, you know, we have a sub-board that, you know, we can, and because I mean, we use the dispatch.
Right.
We know how it works better than you guys. I mean...
I don't know. I've been down there a lot.
Yeah, I'm not saying you guys don't know, but...
I don't know, but I've been down with Sarah a lot, haven't I, Sarah?
We know firsthand how it works. I mean, just like the other day, we got Paige and, you know, I'm gonna keep them accountable for stuff.
And that was you requested by Nescafe times ago?
It was.
And I told the girls to put that in.
Yeah.
That's been requested.
Yeah, we, you know, we got a call and, and of course with the system we have right now, or one of the systems we have, they can type in the address or the longitude and latitude depending upon where it's at. I want that to really get, I mean, we have it. We pay it for.
We've been... They've been working on it.
In other words, you wanna be a board of directors that has like the MS board here.
Yes.
Right. They want to, I mean, it's right now hiring. Hiring goes with you guys, so.
Sure do. Yeah, me.
I don't, I just make recommendations. I'm sure it'd be the same way with them. Or they would be the ones going through the applications and deciding. As long as it's not me.
It's my goal, make it simple for them. We got it so complicated down there for the dispatch right now. I think it could be a lot simpler.
Right.
And that's what.
And I think with the upgrades will help with that too.
Yeah. And there's, we can get away, we can do away with a lot of stuff, I think. And make it simpler for them and make it simpler for us and everybody else. And actually save the county money on doing away with some of this stuff. I mean, that's my goal anyway. I save money and make it easier. There's a way to do it.
Everything still goes through you guys though.
Right. But normally they ain't gonna want the two-hundred thousand or whatever spent on guy on. And we have to, do have to upgrade some stuff pretty quick now.
By May. By May. I was gonna see if we could push it into the next fiscal year, wait till July, wait a month until July to do the final upgrades.
That's something you guys can decide, right? You know, we're still all running our money.
We've got the money in the cash flow account. We can do it.
So you go along with these guys, you know, hire and fire?
Well, they won't have responsibility. As long as it's not mine, that's fine.
Well, say yeah, you know.
As long as it stays not mine. As long as, I don't really care whichever way they think will be best.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I maybe we take no action until the resolution is like they want it.
So yeah, who do you want on there?
Well, your five members are you two.
I have the members, so that's all you want on there is just those that.
Yeah.
Do they want them? Is that where we have one of them goes every, off every year or how you go on?
Well, they have to set that. They have to draw lots. I mean, you can't just say, I'm gonna do five. I mean, you'll draw them.
Are you wanting to keep it where it's all fire departments or do you want a commissioner on board?
I don't talk to people and I don't wanna be on board. You got fire departments is fine.
It's fine with me.
Thank you. I mean, I'll still check in and everything else.
No, I don't think it'll be a problem. I think it'll be good.
So Sarah, you guys figured out how you want it and...
It's good with me. I feel like having a board and being able to, I mean, take something away from, you know.
Take more lots, yeah.
And especially have five of us being able to see how it's going. I mean, especially with it's all being from different departments. I mean.
Right, nine of them.
You know, we can definitely get more input on how, like with Valene, you know, they're having trouble and, you know, they can, Rob being on there, he can let us know how the radio's working down there and...
There's always been a dead spot down that part of the county. I'll tell you that right now. There's something we'd like to get fixed as soon as possible. I don't know how you're gonna get it fixed, but yeah.
Are you moving the fire repeater?
I'm doing whatever they want me to do. I'm just waiting on them. Rob, I figured Rob would be the one to tell me.
Yeah.
And I'm not gonna do anything till I hear.
After that other tire on?
That's if they want to do it.
So you two and who else?
Uh, Rob.
Bob Rockemore.
Rob and Rob.
Lori.
Nobody from the south even wanted it, did they? Except Rob.
Well, Johnny was on it then. He, he wanted off, but he still was, I was at the meeting.
Johnny's a good guy.
Yeah.
So can, how'd you do your motion?
I maybe we take no action on it till we can get the resolution down to their satisfaction of being a board of directors and their five existing board members.
Does that sound good?
I'll email it to you then. Then I said I had done both and I didn't email it to anybody because nobody had said for sure how they wanted it. So I'll email it to you and make sure it's all right then.
Yeah, you guys make sure it's all right and come back. I'll figure out what you want to do and whatever. Talk to Sarah or whatever. All better? Main reason I go in there Monday mornings, I don't have my leaky. I'm nosy. Sorry, I'll tell you. See what one of my guys has to do.
Thank you guys.
Yes, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Get back soon. Wait, right?
Not quite. We're, we're waiting for this rain to be, you know.
Nice rain, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, we're back to the minute, right? You gonna sit back there, Kyle?
Wait. First Thanksgiving dinner's coming up, so I need to practice being a backhoe Baptist. If you're backhoe Baptist, you get to, you get to be in first in line.
You uh, getting ready for deer season, are you?
Yeah.
You know, they said people or something. They want the front of the bus, the back of the church, in the middle of the road.
I never heard of that. That's pretty good.
I haven't either. That is good. How's your family fare?
Good.
Between Harley and Irma, no cattle. So that's good.
There's Harley and Irma. It was small.
And there's another one coming.
There's a full one coming. Your family will be all right. I'll tell you right now.
No, really honestly, from all of the people I know, no one had any major issues from it, so.
I didn't know that. Well, she named her kids. I wasn't paying attention. She said families.
They were out of school a whole week. My son went back to school today. A whole week.
They'll get that where they don't have to make it up.
A snow day in Florida?
They have winter days. They call them winter days in Florida.
Well, it's cold or what?
Whatever they choose to use them for. You never know.
Well, northern Florida can get pretty cold.
Windy days.
No, they don't call windy days.
Yeah.
So maybe we should have the marriage.
All favor? Even old warrants for family.
No, I just moved them. I'm sorry.
You carried them in here somewhere.
There's a couple there. There's first doing right there that are, that are last years. Yeah. I decided I better fill the whole tank up because it was, I had just put enough water in it to keep it from blowing anywhere.
Right.
So I filled it up this weekend for it.
Outside county chair.
It's floor downstairs.
Check the jail. How'd jail go? I'll make a motion approved.
Say yeah.
All favor? Road crossing permits. I might have some.
I was running out of money. I had to go sell some of those to get some more money.
There's, there they are. Same name, but it should be rights different once in a while. I feel a little worried Sarah and I, on the way to the race track. What's up, guys? You doing something out here?
Never run that triple option. That's hard to cover.
No?
Can't really practice that defensive practice.
They figured it out though.
Yeah.
I watched the flight back. Toss the cokes in there.
Did you see the hit that got, that CD Lamb ejected?
Yeah. He hit it too. I don't think it, I don't think that, that guy wasn't a defensive player. I mean.
He kinda was.
He was.
Somebody told me to technically write a rule that was the right call, but.
Well, they, they uh, I don't think called protesting. They're talking to those people.
We accepted road caution from me.
All favor?
So about strikers coming in.
He used to, he'd have to sit out with that board, so.
What?
He won't have to sit out.
No.
Because it happened right before half.
Right.
So your goal.
What I thought too. I feel, I was feeling sorry for him when I was thinking.
Absolutely. We'll have it for a half. You don't have to sit out in any of the next game.
Right. What gets me is all this freshman kid you got playing.
Good. Murray will be a good quarterback next year. That Murray kid will be a good quarterback next year.
He a good quarterback now.
He'll probably be starting somewhere else.
No, Baker's gone this year.
I was gonna say he would be starting somewhere else.
Right.
Don't step out if I start scoring.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah.
All favor? Are we supposed to this next one or not?
No, we already did that.
Huh? We already did that?
Yes, I have a motion on it.
No, official certification.
Oh, well, that was, the next one was the nine-one-one, so.
Oh, okay.
We already did a loyalty oath on it. We do a loyalty oath on all of our employees. So there is our thing we'll send in.
Yeah, I wondered.
I'm sorry.
Are we supposed to do this? Do we have to do this or not are we doing?
Yes, it has to be signed at the meeting. But we already do the loyalty oath, so.
The loyalty oath is already.
Are you worth us doing this?
You'll have to make that call. I think they already did have a motion for that.
Who was it?
So am I supposed to?
I wasn't here for the motion. I was only here for the interview.
That's how it works. So silent, okay. I'll make a motion to approve. So I don't know what, I had to give us some crap.
I know. I figured. I was waiting for it.
How many we got downstairs now?
I don't know. How many of what we got downstairs?
Inmates.
Oh, I don't know.
I emailed that to her.
Now you're ready for the next one? Kind of clerk to go out on bids for twelve months, vouch for application board.
I'll sign off on those specs.
I don't know if I ever give her those. I found, I found like a whole bunch of the notebook ones.
So you want me to stop printing them? Is that what you're telling me? It's just a habit to print them after I did.
Because she, when she emailed her, she prints them off. She keep them in her files.
They wanted to make you feel special.
She's the same thing she always does, yeah?
Yes.
Talked off.
She's sending them to Midwest, Royal and Tulsa County Administrative Services.
There's somewhere we gotta sign on or there's more.
Yeah, you need to sign off on the specs on the first page of specs. This is just mine.
Right here. I guess that terms technically.
Just showing you guys have seen the specs.
Did you see the specs?
Not yet.
I got them all.
Yeah, it's going on. Make a motion to approve. All favor? The resolution to separate sheriff cash, drug forfeiture cash, and sheriff cash training, their own funds for the budget maker.
That, um, budget maker was somehow when those two accounts get over, I just printed them.
Yeah.
Account summary. When those two get over to the treasures off, it lumps them together. And so he wants us just to move, to leave the BDFEO under drug forfeiture and to move the cat, the sheriff train and the BDF into one that just says sheriff cash training. But we're making a new fund, so it has to go through the board.
You can put it in my, my account.
And here is your resolution.
Your treasury account. Got any idea when buddies don't show up?
I asked him when I had him on the phone. I, he, Ted told me to do this when he came and picked up our stuff. And he says, you can just do it when you get back from the wedding and everything. I forgot about it. It's like, I got to the bottom of my wallet. Oh, my goodness. And he was waiting on some stuff for the schools, which has nothing to do with us.
Right.
But when I talked to him, he said, so you guys are ready for yours? I'm like, oh, yeah. But I mean, we can't do anything till we have the schools anyway. He thought it would be about the second week of October. He says, don't put me on the agenda yet.
Well, that's not too far off. That's too far off.
He thought it would be about the second week of October and he would be that. He thought it would be about the second week of October, and he would be that of it.
Well, that's good. Make a motion to approve, too. All favor?
Aight.
Transfer of funds from R two A County General to J one C Court Clerk travel for six hundred dollars a month, travel for September, and travel class in October.
They changed this form also, so it looks a little bit different. Um, this is just for Tammy, when we, we put in the fifty percent of fifteen, sixteens, she's already went to several classes, and we've used in the fifty percent, so I just transferred from her M and O into her travel, and then I asked if we had to transfer it back, and they said, no, but do not put an additional, so we'll just subtract that six hundred from the amount that we put in her, um, into her, um, travel then, because she doesn't have an M and O, I said from M and O, but it comes from County General, because she doesn't have an M and O, but we will not do an additional six hundred, we'll take that out of the total that we do for the rest of the budget.
That's good, she's going those classes.
Yes, it is.
She never went before, didn't ever got to go before, right?
Make motion.
Second.
I got one, I got one, but I have lots, I have to get the, yeah.
Any unforeseen business?
Maybe we can.
Go get that.
All favor?